All right, good evening. We will convene the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District. Trustee Melchiker will read out the actions taken in closed session.
On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved an unpaid leave of absence without benefits from January tenth through May twentieth, two thousand and eleven, to a classified employee.
Okay? This is it? Thank you. All right. Would you all please join me in the invocation? Please join me in a brief moment of silence for all of the victims of the Arizona shootings Our Father, we ask for your blessings on the victims of the Arizona massacre. Please be with their families and comfort them in their hours of need. We ask your blessings on these proceedings this evening. Guide this Board and our deliberations and decision-making. Be with our teachers and staff as they lead our students in their pursuit of learning. All this we ask in your name. Amen. Please remain standing and Trustee Prendergast will lead us in the pledge.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we have some resolutions this evening. And if we could please have the representatives for the Irvine Valley Women's Golf Team come forward, and President Rockmore is going to award this. Trustee Melchiker, first, we need to have a vote on this resolution. So would you read the -- all right, go ahead, read the resolution, and then we'll have a roll call.
I'd be delighted to read the resolution for the Irvine Valley College Ladies Woman Golf, the two thousand and ten state champions. Whereas two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, Irvine Valley College Women's Golf Team had a triumphant season culminating in the college's thirteenth state championship and the women's golf first team championship by defeating Canyon Sacramento City and Modesto City College with a two-day total of six hundred and fifty at Los Serranos Country Club. And whereas the team recorded their first ever team regional championships, defeating five other colleges en route to posting a six hundred and thirty-two team score in their third regional appearance in the last six years. And whereas players Casey Fuller, Chelsea Kaprowitz, Foya Lazar, Taylor Moore, Ashley Penner, and Nicole Rivera earned all conference honors, while Rivera also named the conference and regional Player of the Year in addition to making her second consecutive All-State Team. And whereas the team was coached by Ben Burnett, who was named the Orange Empire Conference Coach of the Year for the fourth time in the last seven years while collecting his third OEC title. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven Irvine Valley College Women's Golf Team members Casey Fuller, Chelsea Kaprowitz, Foya Lazar, Taylor Moore, Ashley Penner, and Nicole Rivera, head coach Ben Burnett, and his second coach, assistant coach Mark Philippin, and Alan Ochai for their outstanding athletic season and excellent representation of Irvine Valley College. And can you please read the Board of Members so we can vote on this resolution? Thank you.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Shay. All right, and President, yes, would you like, Rockmore, would you like to make a comment and invite the coach to make a comment?
Yes, I sure will. Mr. Chancellor and Board of Trustees, thank you very much for helping us celebrate this wonderful occasion here. And actually, this is the thirteenth state championship for our short history as a college, which I think is very impressive. We're very proud of our women's golf program, as you can see, and Coach Burnett. So let me do a couple of things here. First, to award the trophy to the coach and the team. Here it is. Absolutely stunning.
Yes.
Trophy here. There you go, Coach. Job well done.
And then, lastly, I'd also like to present to Nicole Rivera her plaque here for being the Player of the Year in the Orange Empire Conference. Nicole? There you go. Okay.
Enough said by me. Coach, do you have a few words? Very few words.
Yeah, it's said that behind every good man, there's a good woman. Behind this good man, there are sick good women, and we thank you for acknowledging their success. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. And our next resolution is for the two thousand and ten Outstanding Manager of the Year, and that is Teri Flugerman. Would you come forward? And we would like to have our Chancellor present this. Would you read the resolution?
Yes.
Trustee Melchiker.
This is for, as you mentioned, Teri Flugerman, who is the two thousand and ten Outstanding Manager of the Year. Whereas Teri Flugerman, the ATEP Director of Public Information Marketing, was voted by her colleagues and recognized by Chancellor Gary Portner as the two thousand and ten Outstanding Manager of the Year. And whereas Teri Flugerman has shown extraordinary initiative to identify opportunities to promote the district, college, and ATEP. And whereas Teri Flugerman is described by her colleagues as collaborative, resilient, highly productive, techno-savvy, and strategic, providing leadership and mentorship to many. Whereas Teri Flugerman is known for her creativity and unfailing positivity, with a remarkable ability to analyze strategies and issue and navigate complex controversies, delays, and setbacks with tact apparent ease. And whereas while serving for the last five years, Teri Flugerman's dedication, leadership, and teamwork with district-wide faculty, staff, administrators, students, and community have been critical to the launch of our new campus at ATEP and have contributed to the overall success of our district. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Teri Flugerman upon the achievement and well-deserved recognition as the two thousand and ten Outstanding Manager of the Year.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Shay. Chancellor, would you like to make some comments and have Ms. Flugerman make some comments?
Teri said she didn't have any comments, but I've gotten to know Teri a whole lot more since I've come back to work. We work very closely, and I know that, I was familiar with the work that she did before. She's very deserving, does a wonderful job, and I'm sure that the Board is getting to know her a little more too now that she's been in the office.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to say anything, Teri?
I just want to say thank you very much. It's a great honor. Appreciate it.
Okay. And our last resolution is for our two thousand and ten Outstanding Administrator of the Year, Geraldine German.
And this is for my good friend, longtime friend Geraldine Schuman, the two thousand and ten Outstanding Administrator of the Year. But I didn't make this decision, so whereas, but I would make this decision. Whereas Geraldine Schuman, Dean of Counseling Services and Special Programs at Saddleback College, was voted by her colleagues and recognized by Chancellor Gary Portner as the two hundred and ten Outstanding Administrator of the Year. Whereas Geraldine Schuman eagerlyly and tirelessly welcomed the unique challenges and work volume of her position supervising fourteen programs in order to provide critical services to students and the community, even when it means staying late or working weekends. And whereas Geraldine Schuman has established a reputation among her peers as in staff for kindness, warmth, sense of humor, support, service, guidance, and strength in guiding staff and students through the challenges and opportunities. Whereas Geraldine Schuman is described by her colleagues as kind, dedicated, creative, imaginative, hardworking, organized, and a team builder who mentors others and provides a positive example and attitude. And whereas during her twenty-nine years, Geraldine Schuman's dedication, leadership, and teamwork in counseling, EOPS, care, DSPS, transfer center, CalWorks, matriculation, career guidance, and job search, and the Adult Opportunity Reentry Center have contributed greatly to the success of students, Saddleback College, and our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Geraldine upon her achievement and well-deserved recognition as the two thousand and ten Outstanding Administrator of the Year.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Melchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Patberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Shay. Now, I'm sure our Chancellor and our college president would like to make some comments.
And again, Geraldine has been providing outstanding services to Saddleback College students for a long time. What did they say, twenty-nine years? Wow. And she's well-deserving of this recognition, and I'm really happy for her.
Just to echo everything everybody else has said, I certainly can't say enough wonderful things about Geraldine, and certainly the way it was written, it's very true. So we're very proud of you, Geraldine, at Saddleback College. And thank you, Chancellor, for bestowing this honor upon Geraldine Schuman.
All right. Geraldine, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, it's my chance right now. I'd like to thank you all for this honor. I'm truly the lucky one here because I get the opportunity to work every day with wonderful staff, faculty, and students here at the college, and it makes my life a joy because of this talent and the energy and the fact that our focus is on the bottom line, which is student services. And I would like to say I also have the opportunity as Dean of Counseling to work with colleagues and staff members across this campus, across the colleges, and in the district. And so it's just a real pleasure that I have, and I've enjoyed working here for twenty-nine-plus years. However, what I want to say is this award is most special because it's voted on by my colleagues, and I thank you very much.
All right. And before we move to public comments, I just want to acknowledge that we have a brand-new trustee who was appointed by the Board last week, trustee Dr. Meldow. And you might see he has a huge basket there, and those are goodies that I believe were put together by the district. I'm not sure who put those together, but to welcome our brand-new trustee. So was it Saddleback College?
It looks like Saddleback.
Oh, of course. Okay. Okay. Very good. TJ got one too when he was on his first meeting. So we --
He's still waiting for the IVC basket.
Did you hear that? Still waiting.
He's still waiting for the IVC basket.
Uh-oh. He threw --
Threw out the challenge.
All right. Very good. Now, I'm going to call, we have six people who want to make public comments. You have two minutes each. I'm going to call three people at a time. I want the first person to stand at the podium. You will have a timer, and I'll let you know when your time is up. And if you could, the other two just stand in the wings there, wait, and then we'll call the next three. The first one is Marissa Farrar, I believe. And would Rahil Hanif come up and wait your turn? And I think this is Vincent Nava, but I'm not sure. Could you just wait your turn and, no, wait and stand there near the podium so that we don't waste time? All right, Melissa, go ahead. Your clock is starting now.
Okay. Hello, my name is Melissa Finersey. I'm the Saddleback College Associated Student Government President, and thank you for hearing from me today. We're here today to present the voice of the Saddleback College students on what we would like to see what happened with the student trustee position. Today, I'll be stating to you our request for the position. Later, you'll be hearing from different students the reasons for our suggestions, as well as what Saddleback College students are directly asking for you, the Board of Trustees, to do on this matter. Number one, we're asking to have two student trustees. We would like to have two student trustees, one representing Saddleback College and one representing IVC students. This is something that ASG Senate at Saddleback College has voted on. We're also asking that the district handle the student trustee election since it's a district position.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Rahil Hanif. Go ahead.
As you are all aware, Board Policy fifty-six twenty-seven states that associated students of the colleges of SOCCCD shall be given an opportunity to participate in the formulation and development of district policies and procedures that have a significant effect on students as defined by the law in the Title V California Code of Regulations. We would like this opportunity made available to us when the district makes a decision about the student trustee, and this is the reason why we would like our suggestions be taken seriously. Furthermore, California Education Code Section seven-two-oh-two-three-point-five states that the governing board of each community college district shall order the inclusion within the membership of the government board in addition to the number of members otherwise prescribed of one or more non-voting students who are residents of California.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Vincent Nava, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Now comes the reasons why we think we should have two student trustee members who represent their respective students on their campuses. Reason number one, we believe this will allow equal and fair representation for both IVC and Saddleback students. Reason number two, IVC and Saddleback students are both large campuses. Our Board of Trustees are able to represent their areas of residence, and this is a very similar form of representation that we are asking for. Reason number three is two students can keep each other informed and help each other with the task of the student trustee as well as keeping each other company during official events, retreats, and conferences. Reason number four, having two student trustee positions will eliminate time issues and allow for the student trustees of each district to poll students on issues before giving their advisory vote to the Board so that the students are represented fairly and asked what they think about certain issues before a vote is being cast. And reason number five is this will guarantee that someone who attends our school is representing our students, and the will, and that the will be true for IVC students as well. This will allow for a representative who is familiar with a particular school's student culture as well as being familiar with some of the issues faced by students within our own respective campuses.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll call the next three names. If you could come up in the order I call you. Justin Huff, Chase Inglehart, and Tony Hutley. Justin?
Aye. Finally, this will eliminate competition between the two campuses during the student trustee elections. Also, this election will be able to focus, will be focused on student civic engagement and student representation instead of the epic battle between IVC and Saddleback ensues during every election season. Also, we're well-versed with any arguments against why there shouldn't be, and really the best one was that there isn't enough room up there for a student trustee, coming from a student who will wait one hour for a parking spot and survives on top ramen. I can tell you that we are absolutely okay with sitting on the floor. In closing, we want to ask you, the Board of Trustees, to help us guarantee equal representation for both IVC and Saddleback College students. We are asking that the Board of Policy regarding the student trustee position and the elections be looked over by the Board of Trustees and changed so that reflects what we, the Saddleback students, are asking for. Because I'm not just a person, I'm a student, like many of the people in this room, who would like to have their voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Chase Inglehart? Where's Chase? Is he here? Okay, he must have left, had a class or something, maybe. Tony Hutley, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Tony Hutley. I'm the co-chair of Biology at Saddleback College. I know most of the Board members. Welcome to the two new Board members. It is my understanding that a little later on this evening, you are going to hear a report on the situation with our new science building, and what I would like to do is I would like to speak to that issue right now. I'd like to start with a little story. On December twenty-second at three P.M., while most of you were out Christmas shopping, Dr. Jim Repka, the Chair of the Geology Department, came to my office, and for the twelfth time in eighteen years, Jim said, "We're leaking again." And a massive leak had opened up again in our building. This is not the small leaks, this is a giant one. And for two hours, we fought that leak. Maintenance and operations showed up and began to work on the drains outside of the building, but the south end of our building leaks massively when it rains. With the help of Jim Repka, myself, and two of our senior lab techs, we rescued roughly fifty computers that were sitting in one inch of water, and we removed over eight-hundred gallons of water from the building at that time. This is not something new. Everyone who has been to this campus and been to that building knows that this is standard operating procedure. Jim and I, we refer to it as our Christmas bonus at Saddleback College. We get to save the building. This goes on regularly. The building has electrical problems, the building has heating problems. The temperature in my office on any summer afternoon is over one hundred degrees Fahrenheit. It is under forty degrees on any good winter day. Our classrooms are not taken care of well. The building is falling into a sinkhole. I am asking you, when you hear this report tonight, to take this into consideration. Now that you're going to actually consider this, this needs to be the single number-one priority of this district. I don't care who wants a new building. I don't care what their building looks like. No one is in our situation. It is morally unacceptable, and it is unacceptable for us to not have a new building at the front of the list. Thank you.
Time is up. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you for your public comments, and they will all be, of course, taken up by the Chancellor and given due consideration. Yes?
I would just like to ask the students who spoke to us what colleges they're from, respectively.
Saddleback College, all of them are from Saddleback College.
Thanks so much.
Okay. All right, thank you. And with that, we'll move to Board reports. We'll start with trustee Jay.
Yes, it's running late here, so I'm going to just make one announcement, and that is congratulations again to my friend here, Frank Michael Meldow, who is with us for a long time, we hope, Frank. We enjoyed very much when you were sworn in last week.
Thank you. And trustee Meldow, do you have any report?
No report.
No report? Okay. Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, I would also like to welcome the newest trustee, trustee Meldow, to our Board. And looking forward, working together with the two newest Board members and all of the Board members as we govern this, two wonderful colleges and our ATEP into the coming years. So welcome.
All right, thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I would also like to congratulate Mike on his appointment and serving with him. You know, as long as I've been on this Board, it's nice to have someone new, finally. Also, congratulate IVC Golf, Teri, and Geraldine on their resolutions. Very nice that you're able to get those. Also, looking forward, I'm going to be attending the Effective Trustee with trustee Melchiker and Meldow up in Sacramento. The only negative to that is that I will be missing the President's Cup game for that. I guess it could be worse, I could be attending the ineffective trustee conference. So I am looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, yes, and welcome to trustee Meldow. And yes, trustee Meldow, trustee Melchiker, and trustee Prendergast will all be going up to the California Community College League meeting in Sacramento this coming weekend. And they will have to miss the first President's Cup. Tomorrow. Tomorrow. And that is when our first President's Cup game is between Irvine Valley and Saddleback College. But there will be another one that they can all attend on February fourth, and that will be when the final award is made and winner of the President's Cup, correct? Yes, okay. So with that, I'll move on, and we'll go to trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to take a personal moment to mention that, to surprise to me, my bride is here this evening, my wife of twenty-seven years, Jolene. Nice to see you here this evening. Sometimes I come home tired from these meetings, and I think she's come to check on me as to what it is I do to get tired. Anyway, welcome aboard to our new trustee. I'd like to report from the Legislative Task Force Committee that this weekend, our Chancellor and trustee Melchiker and President Todd Burnett and our Public Affairs Director Teri Flugerman will head to Sacramento to attend the Community College League of California's Conference and host a legislative event in that context. The Orange County Legislative Task Force represents all five of our, excuse me, all four of our community college districts in Orange County. And the task force will host an event at the Capitol to honor work of the Education Committee. Awards will be presented by the task force to Assembly Member Julia Brownlee and to our own Senator Bob Huff from Orange County. The event will honor them for their hard work in passing legislation that helps our students, most recently AB fourteen forty, which will greatly assist student transfers to the Cal State University system. The four districts will also showcase the important work they're doing in the areas of transfer, career technical education, and basic skills. I look forward to a report at our next meeting from Marcia to the Board next month about the important legislative outreach activities, and we thank her for attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jay. Uh, trustee, I'm sorry, Lang.
Good evening. I'd also like to extend my congratulations and good wishes to our newest trustee, trustee Meldow, and I have no further report tonight.
Thank you. And student trustee Shay.
I also would like to congratulate Dr. Meldow, and I hope to get to know you better for my last three months here. But yeah, that's it.
All right, thank you. And now we'll have our Chancellor's report.
Trustee Fuentes just was talking about Legislative Task Force and the work in Sacramento, and as all of you reading the paper know, the legislation for the new year budget is beginning to unfold. The Governor has his initial proposal, and as it's shaping up right now, the proposals for community colleges sort of range from serious to extremely serious, depending on what happens with the upcoming June tax election. The estimates right now are that, assuming that the June tax measure passes, that community colleges would be cut by four hundred million. That's being expressed as six point four percent, sort of as a statewide number. However, if it fails, and the projections are only about twenty percent that it would be successful, eighty percent that it would fail, then it becomes much more dire. And in the event it fails, there's two scenarios that they've talked about, and they both have to do with what the impact is on Proposition ninety-eight funding, which is what part of the state funding pot goes to education. Under one scenario, the best scenario there, is that community colleges would be cut by six hundred and twenty million dollars. That would be almost ten percent decrease in funding. And the worst scenario is that Proposition ninety-eight is suspended, and they're projecting then just about nine hundred million dollar cut to community colleges, which is about a fourteen-and-a-half percent reduction in funding. All of that being said, the effect on each district is unknown right now, and the Community College League of California, who we'll be meeting with in Sacramento this weekend, has done some simulations, and I think it needs to be said that they haven't done a simulation for our district because our district is a basic aid district, and they don't know how these proposals are going to impact basic aid districts. So that doesn't at all mean that we won't be affected. I think that we just have more uncertainty than other districts. Other districts know their fate. And the worst scenario is that Proposition 98 is suspended, and they're projecting then just about $900 million cut to community colleges, which is about a 14.5% reduction in funding. All of that being said, the effect on each district is unknown right now. And the Community College League of California, who we'll be meeting with in Sacramento this weekend, has done some simulations. And I think it needs to be said that they haven't done a simulation for our district, because our district is a basic aid district. And they don't know how these proposals are going to impact basic aid districts. So that doesn't at all mean that we won't be affected. I think that we just have more uncertainty than other districts. Other districts know they're facing this, and we don't know yet what we're facing, but we know that it's very serious. So that's the extent of my comments.
Nothing bright there. All right, and now, are there any trustee requests for reports? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move right along, and our next item on the agenda is discussion item. Is there anything, Chancellor, we need to advance before that?
No.
Okay. So discussion item, and that will be presented by Brandy? Is that right? All right, come forward. Why don't you introduce her? Chancellor will introduce this item.
We had a request at our last meeting from Trustee Padberg to talk about some new building projects, one of which was just mentioned by Professor Huntley, and that's the New Science Building at Saddleback College. Another one of interest to Trustee Padberg was a stadium remodeling at Saddleback College. And then I put on a building that we've been discussing for a very long time around here, and that's the first permanent building that we would have at ATEP. And so Brandy's going to go through the entire Capitol.
Who is Brandy?
Brandy Delaina, she, very good, Trustee Padberg. Brandy Delaina is our director, District Director of Facilities, and she does a wonderful job. And she's going to fill us in on the Capitol Outlay Process, how it works around here, what some of the priorities that have been spent, or have been set in the past, how we have fared in meeting those priorities, and how these new buildings might fit into the priorities. And with that, Brandy, please proceed.
Well, that pretty much sums it up, Gary. And with that, any questions?
Brandy, could you just get a little closer to the mic so that we have a little more? That's good, thank you.
Okay. All righty, as Chancellor Mather, or sorry, Portner said, sorry. As Chancellor Portner already said, this is in response to your request, President Padberg, for information on the Sciences Building and on the stadium. And this is a preliminary report. Thank you. Okay, so, what would we consider when addressing the stadium and the Sciences Building? Let us first consider, what are the objectives when considering these projects in relationship to capital improvement projects? How do these individual projects relate to our overall planning, and how would they be funded? These and many other questions are concerns that should be addressed from the start. We should also consider that there are other projects not included in that very shortlist of two projects that warrant careful attention at this time. Here we see a conceptual rendering of the ATEP at full buildout for the Phase 3A. The first building of this phase is one of the projects that we're considering. The purpose of this presentation is to guide you through the process for making decisions for capital improvements and update you on the current state of affairs. But to do this, I guess we should first wonder, what is a capital improvement project? We have an operational definition in place right now. The Director of Facilities for both of the colleges and at the district level have agreed that the capital improvement project is a project that requires inspection by the Division of the State Architects that is greater than $1 million, or is less than $1 million, but has a complication that isn't typical of a scheduled maintenance project. The operational definition is currently under review with the Capital Improvement Committee, which is a committee comprised of both district and college individuals, and it will consider other aspects besides operational, but also the aspects of fiscal. All righty. Perhaps the most difficult challenge when making decisions in the capital improvements projects is the question of how to remain objective when we have decreased resources but increased needs. The key is to engage a plan that has defined and prioritized projects, and then make a reasonable effort to stick with that plan. Our current process results in just such a plan, it's our Education and Facilities Master Plan. Before switching to the next slide, though, I'd like to put a caveat on it. It's a slide that has a lot of little information on it, and it's really just about a relationship of the two projects in question, the stadium and the Sciences Building, with regard to the projects that are listed in our plan. So here we have that. This is a list for the Saddleback College from our 2006 Education and Facilities Master Plan. It's a list of all the projects that they considered important at that time, with the yellow portion of the projects identifying projects that would be completed from 2006 to 2010, the blue and aqua portions identifying projects that would be completed from 2011 to 2020. In those projects that should have been completed by last year or this fiscal year, you'll see little blue dots on the left-hand side that identify those projects which have already been completed. The orange stars are projects that are underway, and the projects within the yellow section that have parentheses are projects that are not yet underway. You'll notice that the ATAS Project, item number three, is the only project that is out of order. That's out of order because of an emergency situation that took place with the BGS Building. We bumped that and went to the BGS Building. Otherwise, this plan's working pretty darn good. You'll also notice that at the very bottom of that yellow list is the Sciences Building. All righty. Now, the Sciences Building and the Stadium are two of many projects that are identified in our plan. The plans from both of the colleges, from IVC and from Saddleback, are then joined annually in a five-year plan, and that's what you see before you right now. We've identified where the Sciences Building and the Stadium stands in relationship to the overall priority list for both colleges. And this priority list is put together by the Presidents of both colleges, the Vice-Chancellor of Business Services, the Chancellor, and then we make a recommendation to the board. So that the list you're looking at right now is a list that was approved by the Board in June of 2010. I should say that this is a list of 24 projects, it's actually a list of 30 projects, but for the sake of display, you'll only see 24. All right, so, sorry, I didn't turn my page here. We update our master planning effort every five years. If you do the math, that tells you that in 2011, we're updating our Education and Facilities Master Plan. We're in that process right now. But five years is a long time between planning processes, and a lot of things can change. The list that you're looking at right now is a list of changes that have taken place in that five years, identifying administrative changes, the economy, obviously in 2006, we couldn't know it would be where it is right now. And the hit that we're feeling is a change in our basic aid, the dollars that are coming in a minor bit, and then a discontinuation of the state match funding, and we'll get into that a little bit more later. On the positive side, we've made some real positive advancements with the ATEP Project with the City of Tustin, and later in this board meeting, you'll hear a report on the new market tax credits and the potential for $10 to $11 million. So when it comes to deciding what to do about capital improvement projects with regard to changes, there are many ways to address these changes. You can stay the course from, and in the spectrum, you can stay the course, you can take the middle ground of establishing a process for minor course corrections, or you can take the other end of the spectrum and completely throw the plan out and completely reconsider the projects and their priorities and their funding. Historically, what we have done is we've done the middle course, we've established a decision-making process for making minor course changes. That decision-making process has been based on three things. First, the emergency situations, one of which you've already heard about, the BGS Building is a building that bumped a project. The second one you haven't heard about yet is the Saddleback College Bridge Project, which was declared structurally unsound, so that one took a jump in the list of priorities. The other two things that we consider if we're going to reprioritize is funding disadvantages that a project might face, or funding advantages. And with that, I'm going to shift a little bit now and go into funding considerations. And I've zoomed in on the top five projects that were listed in the five-year plan. And this five-year plan is, like I think I said, it goes to the State Chancellor's Office. And this list we're looking at right now is actually a list from the State Chancellor's Office website. So you'll see there the status column, which is on the far-right side of this display, identifies three projects that have been FPP-approved, and then three projects that have been identified as approved for funding. You'll see the first project highlighted in green, that's a total go, the state has the money, the project's been constructed, they're reimbursing us for the money that they agreed to provide to us. The two projects that are in yellow are in a second category. That's the category where the state has approved the funding on those projects, and yet they don't have the money to provide for us. They have agreed, and we as a district, through the Board's approval, have agreed that we will advance fund those projects, knowing that if the state has money available, these will be the first projects that will be reimbursed. However, we are moving forward without state match money on that, and the Board has already allocated monies for both of these projects to move forward. The next project category that you see is the one that the Sciences Building is in. That's a category where we have submitted the FPP or the final project plan to the State Chancellor's Office for approval three years running. In one of those years, they actually approved funding for the project and then determined that it wasn't available and withdrew it. And so this is our fourth year of submitting the Sciences Building project to the State Chancellor's Office. This explains why we've not proceeded with the Science Building today. We continue to hold out hope that the state funding will be made available. You can see that this situation falls into the category of funding disadvantage, so it may be time to consider it. The next slide that I have for you, and staying with our example projects as part of what we're looking at here, the Sciences Building and the Stadium, we want to consider other projects from the Master Plan, and albeit these are not in prioritized order. What they are is a number of projects that are fairly equivalent to the amount of projects that we could perform over a three- to four-year period. And in this slide, you'll see that there are estimated costs for these projects. There are also a column for assigned budget, and that is a budget that the Board has already assigned to these projects, and then the remainder of the dollars that would be needed in order for this project to move forward. The total for projects highlighted over the next three-year period is approximately $143 million. Having established this as the need, and remember, this is an example, let's move into considering available resources. Every month, the Board of Trustees is provided with a basic aid report. That basic aid report identifies these projects here, as well as other projects where basic aid dollars have been allocated. This new slide shows, is assigned available basic aid, assigned but potentially redistributed. What this does differently from the report that you have in your package already and later in the agenda, is it attempts to reassign basic aid dollars that have already been assigned, and how do we go about doing that? Well, the first thing we need to do is think about how those dollars have been assigned in relationship to projects that are under construction. Are they under construction? Then it's not available for reassignment. This is how I've gone about doing it. Are they completed in construction, only they haven't been fiscally closed out yet? They're not available. Is it dollars that have been assigned to scheduled maintenance or IT projects or equipment? Those are not available for reassignment to capital improvement projects. So what you see here is a list of all the remaining projects, and those projects that haven't yet moved into construction, for a total of 44 million, approximately $44 million. Now, if we take that $44 million and we add it over this three-year period to what's considered to be projected basic aid funding that we would be receiving, we come up with a total amount of $145 million, and that looks pretty good when you think that the projects we're talking about over the three-year period is $143 million. However, you might have noticed as I was making this, let's assign all the basic aid dollars to capital improvement projects, a little bit of shuffling on this first row here, because the Vice Chancellor of IT wouldn't be too happy about that, nor would the Presidents be too happy about that, because they also need to be considered. The IT projects still need to be considered, the scheduled maintenance still needs to be considered, and the equipment still needs to be considered. So the next slide shows a consideration of those expenses or budgeted amounts. And we see now that we have 125, approximately $1 million. And by the way, that's about an 80/20 split. Nobody agreed with me that that was an appropriate a split, I'm just giving it as an example. 125 million, which is not $143 million by any means, and so now it starts getting a little trickier, because the projects that we identified for the three years now need to be prioritized. So how do we do that? Do we go outside of the plan that was already presented? Or, there's a lot of different ways we could think about doing that. Maybe we think about redistributing the funds that have been assigned to the different campuses. Maybe we maintain the funding within the campuses within which they've been assigned, and just reassign those to campus assignments. So, you know, there's a couple of things that have to be thought about. But first, we have to think about, when is it right to start thinking about reconsidering our priorities, or reconsidering our funding distributions? Perhaps we've already identified how those situations might be considered, and here was that earlier situation, and the earlier suggestion that we made, the one that we've been historically using for those kinds of decisions. And we already talked about the emergency situations, so let's move into the funding disadvantages. And that, of course, will bring up the Sciences Building. The last state's submittal estimated that the Sciences Building would cost about $58.8 million, with 23.2 of those dollars coming from the district, and $35.6 million coming from the state match. As I've said, this has been considered for three years running, and the time, the clock is ticking. The existing Mass Science Engineering Building was built 37 years ago. Reports on that building right now, today, say that it has deficiencies with the current code requirements for the HVAC system. And there's also been a report on the concrete separation that's apparent as a result of a long-term movement on the slope. And you've also heard earlier this evening about the problems that are happening with water intrusion. Remediation of any of these items would result in the lost availability of the labs. And science labs are very difficult, if not impossible, and I'd say nearly, nothing's impossible given enough money, but nearly impossible, cost prohibitive, and cost prohibitive to relocate. So district staff and the college strongly recommend that the Board consider this project as a basic aid funding priority, and forego the wait for those state funds. This is not a statement that we make lightly, we've been thinking about it for three years, is that money hasn't come our way. Maybe next year, maybe next year, maybe next year. It's a lot of money we're talking about here, $35.6 million. It's a lot of problem we're having with that building right now, which is why, in all seriousness, we're asking you to consider this project. Again, we must consider that any, any, even design, any forward progress on this project, on the Sciences Building, will be viewed by the state as an agreement to totally fund this building at a local level. All righty, that didn't work. As I mentioned before, and this is another Zoom on the five-year plan, the Sciences Building is the next building considered for priority. So if we should take this step, it's in line with what you've already determined to be your next priority, it's not taking a thing out of priority. I'd also like to add that a recommendation, this is information only, we're not going to be asking you for any decisions today, we know this is a lot of information, and the packet, and you can take it away and think about what you've been given today. But that in February, we're going to bring a recommendation to you to move forward with the Sciences Building as a locally funded project. All righty, let's talk about our last category, and let's move on to something better, nicer to hear for a minute, funding advantages. And are there any of those right now? And the answer is yes. Right now, ATEP is looking at the possibility of a funding advantage with the new market tax credit that is possibly in our future. And again, you'll hear more about that from a report that will follow this one. This is very exciting advancement, very exciting progress that could be made. What I've done here is taken the funding allocations to the ATEP campus that you saw before in the larger spreadsheet, taken out only the ATEP dollars that were assigned, added the new market tax credits, and come up with a total of $23.5 million of assigned dollars toward a building at ATEP. That's two-thirds of the way to the cost of the building that we were talking about before. So that's pretty exciting, and would be considered then a funding advantage. The next thing that I'd like finally, and at last, but certainly not least, is the second of the two projects for which this report was requested. You may be aware that there is much talk at Saddleback College regarding foundation fundraising for the stadium. Hopefully, the conversation that we have had relative to this stadium, and you saw earlier where it lands in our priority list, well, aid and call to arms for members of the community to assist with fundraising for this project, it's not in a good place on the priority list right now. But that doesn't mean that the end of hope is over, because as I stated before, this is the year that we're talking about the Education and Facilities Master Plan, this is our 2011 Education and Facilities Master Plan, it's underway, it's currently underway, it's an extensive shared governance process, both colleges- Both colleges, staff, faculty, management, and district are participating in the process. So it's entirely possible that it could change its position of priorities. Like I said before, the blue and the, going back to the Saddleback priorities, the blue and the aqua are up for grabs and could change. We've brought up a lot of questions when it comes to capital improvement projects in this presentation. Some of the questions may be answered when we provide you with the Education and Facilities Master Plan. We'll have a draft for you in March. We are hoping to have the final to you in May. That may extend into June or July, given some situations we just discovered. And I wanted to share with you that there's a link to the master planning process. It's here on the slide, the socdefmp.com. If you go to that website, it will provide you with an opportunity to look at what's been discussed thus far and where we're headed, schedules, when meetings are going to be held. You're all invited to attend any of those meetings. And also, peruse the section on meetings where the agendas and the meeting minutes are listed. You can go into the meeting minutes, and those meeting minutes, especially relative to the focus groups, will identify what your colleges are saying about things like the stadium project, or the sciences project, or any project you might be interested in. Finally, President Padberg, I'd like to thank you for bringing this question forward on the Sciences Building and the stadium, and the opportunity to discuss this larger issue of how capital project improvements decisions are made. President Burnett shared with me this afternoon that both he, college faculty, staff, and management are greatly appreciative of your bringing these points forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We have some questions. The Chancellor would like to make some comments.
Thank you.
First of all, the beginning comment I would make is I'd like to compliment Brandy on a great report. I think it puts everything in. And as she said, we're not asking tonight that the Board make decision. It's here only as an information item. But nevertheless, we do need to start making progress on these projects, and the one that is the highest on the list, the Science Building. In fact, we're, we're, we right now, I believe, have out a request for proposal for Architecture Services that we might even be able to bring at the February meeting.
That's our goal.
Now, the problem with that is, is Brandy mentioned earlier, the minute that we award a contract and we start spending money, we then are no longer eligible for any state funding. So that means we're going to have to come up with a huge amount of basic aid money to fund that, and we need a process with the Board to get the authority to go forward. So at some point here, this is going to turn from information to action, so it'd be good to, tonight, have some feedback from the Board, even though it isn't a decision by the Board. Secondly, it's also pretty obvious that a main objective that we've had for a long time of getting our first permanent building at ATEP, the way we're sitting right now, particularly with the new market tax credits you're about to hear about, we're real close to that. We have two-thirds of the funding available right now that we have to begin with that project, and we would probably only need an additional 10, maybe 10 or 12 million dollars to be able to move forward with that first 50,000-square-foot building. So the stadium, I think, needs a little more work, particularly within the college. The college needs to establish that among all of its projects is the highest on its list after the Science Building. So, you know, the college will have to debate that. So I guess those are my comments, and I'd like to see the Board ask as many questions as they'd like, and give us some indications of how you'd like to proceed.
Well, I have several trustees wanting to speak, and since I'm the one who asked this report, I'm going to take some priorities here, and I'm going to make some comments. I see that your stadium proper is listed at 6 million.
Yes.
And I'm not sure exactly what all that includes. And then there's this Wellness Center, which I've heard vaguely about, and I'm not sure how that is tied into a stadium. So I'd like clarification on that. The other comments I would make is that with the Science Building, it's like a catch-22. It's of high priority. We really need to fix it. It's falling apart and falling down. If we spend the money, we shoot ourselves in the foot, and we can't get that state money. However, who knows when the state money will come? The other thing is, if you could just make a comment about this, Brandy, I'm led to believe that because of the economy, that these estimates are pretty highly overinflated, that you can get buildings now for about half of what it would have cost at the time maybe we had these estimates made. So if you could make comments about all those points, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I'll try to remember. I think there were three things, and I'm trying to get my slide. Here we go. You asked about the Wellness Center and how it relates to the stadium, and the slide that I've just put up identifies in red there, the rectangle at the end of the stadium would be where the Wellness Center would be located, and it would include training facilities, locker rooms, classroom space, the restroom facilities that we're talking about that are necessary at the stadium. So off the top, those are a few of the things that would be included. Its relationship, it's directly related to the stadium, I think, with an explanation, that explanation, you can see how that would be. However, the two projects absolutely could be considered as separate projects and funded separately. It's believed that, especially with the foundation fundraising that's taking place right now, that the Wellness Center would really go a long way toward, because there would be community interest in it, would go a long way toward helping drive the stadium proceeds. And if you don't mind, I'd also like to turn this over to Dr. Burnett. He could probably answer a little bit more on that issue.
Sure. Thank you, Brandy. I think you did actually a great job there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, she has it right, and the reason we have it separated out is because there is a possibility, if we go to the next step for design, that we could separate the two projects. However, the needs of the college, not only in just athletics and kinesiology, in fact, the exact teams and athletes and students that'd be using the stadium have other facilities in addition, which would include bathrooms, lockers, team rooms, fitness centers, strength center, all these things that frankly, we don't have, or they're being piecemealed, as you know, Nancy, I'm sorry, Trustee Padberg, very well, all over the campus. There needs to be a place to bring it together. As you also may be aware, that the college, over a year ago, had a great opportunity in working with one of our big partners in the Community Mission Hospital, that was very interested in a Wellness Center concept. That got our campus very excited. Now, we're not going forward with Mission Hospital for various reasons, but through our discourse at the campus, we found out that there are tremendous supplemental benefits to our academic programs, in particular, our Health Sciences Program, our Gerontology Program, Nutrition. We could go on and on for a concept of a full Wellness Center. So on the master planning perspective, we cannot not separate the stadium from the Wellness Center, because there are tremendous synergies and benefits together. However, could things be done potentially in a phased basis? That's something that we would like to investigate in the future. Hopefully, that answers, and certainly, we can give you a lot more information on all of this at some point.
Okay. My other two points.
Okay. The one was related to the Science Building and the funding and the State Chancellor's funding. We've waited for three years. It's expected that it's going to be another, maybe three or four years, that you, I think this was your third point about the cost of the buildings. Now is the time to strike. If we have money to apply to a capital improvements project, let's do it now. This is, the costs are not going to get any better than they are right now. Okay, I don't have a crystal ball, maybe they will, but it's not expected that they will. We're saying that we're starting to improve. Our economy is starting to improve. It's going to be a slow and gradual improvement, but nonetheless, we're at the place where it's the best time. Additionally, we're not going to see that, okay, again with the crystal ball, we're not going to see that money for another three or four years from the state. In that timeframe, we will have plenty of opportunity to develop our next project and get in line for that building. It's not like all of a sudden, we aren't going to have capital improvement needs. We'll have a project. When they have money, we'll have a project. We'll have a need for their money when it's available. It's not available today.
I guess I was wondering if you've done some real research on taking what are these estimates that were developed some time ago and trying to go out and get bids, because what I'm being told by other colleges who are building things, the costs are basically half now what they were when they anticipated the building. And of course, that means a great deal in terms of making decisions, so I don't know how you could actually do that, but I think it'd be important.
I can tell you that at the height of the building cycle, the Sciences Building, the labs that are in the Sciences Building were evaluated at $650 a square foot. Today, I'm told that those are going for $453 a square foot by David Hunt with GKK, who's here, and could probably elaborate if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like you to, please.
My name is David Hunt. I'm principal at GKK Works Architects, and we are privileged enough to be one of the firms that is working on this RFP for the architectural services for the building. It's going to be due next Tuesday, and so we've been spending some time looking at all the information that Brandy has requested, and one of that piece of information is a cost estimate that was attached with the request. And the unit pricing in there is about $360 a square foot. And so I think some of these estimates have been revised of late. That number is, we have a similar-sized project that is in Riverside. It's under construction right now. Your project's 81,000 square feet. The project in Riverside is a similar science laboratory. It's 120,000 square feet. That project came in at $301 a square foot. So there still is some room. Like Brandy said, the opportunity for that is slipping. We are seeing some firming up of pricing, so, you know, 360 is probably a good number, but it's certainly not the old estimates. We had actually estimated the Riverside job at $600 a square foot, and it came in at 300. That's your 50%, but now the new estimates that Brandy's putting forward, it's already adjusted for some of that, and the ATEP numbers unfortunately have been adjusted to reflect what we currently see. So those numbers have already been somewhat adjusted downward.
Thank you very much. Other trustees have questions, so I'm going to move on. Trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much for an excellent report. It was really informative. We have such great needs and limited funds. I just wondered, the capital construction money from the state, in the past few years, the only way that community colleges get capital construction money from the state is through statewide bonds, and I believe K-12 gets a third, Community College gets a third, and CSU gets a third. So I think there hasn't been a statewide bond passed in a long time, and I don't think there will be a statewide bond passed, given the finances in the state for a while. So number one, have all these capital construction monies that is the only way we get money for capital construction from the state been allocated? And then another question is, it's been brought up before, that we have a lot of deferred maintenance at the college. Is there any deferred maintenance money coming from the state, and for how long, if there isn't, for how long haven't the community colleges gotten any money for deferred maintenance from the state? Because all of the colleges need this, so our buildings are deteriorating, and we need to fix up the buildings. But my understanding is there hasn't been any money from the state for quite a few years. So I'd like those questions answered, because, you know, part of the reason, if we vote on the Science Building now, and we will never get money from the state, what are the chances that we might get money from the state in the next few years? And as you're saying, building costs are going to go up, and if there's no chances we're going to get it, and we do have some money now that we can't, we might be able to use for this, you know, and have to put other projects on hold, we have to evaluate that in lieu of the possibility of getting money from the state. So thank you.
I'm so glad you brought the point forward about the bonds. I probably should have said something before. You're spot on. When I said before that it might be three or four years before we see any money from the state, it's because there's no bonds being forwarded. We won't see one on the ballot next year. We've been assured that will be the case, no bonds next year. They won't project as far as into two or three years, but the suspicion is they won't be there still then. As far as the deferred maintenance money is concerned, the state did match us a certain dollar amount. They haven't been matching us, I believe, is it three years, Todd? I'm sorry, Dr. Burnett?
I made the same mistake. You mean three years since they've done it last for scheduled maintenance, Carol?
You know, John, is there-
I think that's right.
Is that right, three years?
We haven't received any money in three years for scheduled maintenance.
So then, no, no community colleges in the state have received any money for deferred maintenance for three years. I think this is a problem, really a serious problem statewide for all the community colleges. All 72 districts in the state are having problems with this. I do know that the Board has made a determination that we'd only spend our basic aid money for one-time projects and not for ongoing funds, and the Board has, for the most part, really stuck to this, and there's little chance of raising a bond. Our other way would be to get money would be raising a bond, and because of the finances in the state right now, I think there's little chance of passing a bond. So the only opportunity we'd have to pay for this building is to use our basic aid money, and we really do have to decide if it's, if we'll have to put the other projects on hold and move forward. I think a good case could be made for the Science Math Building. It certainly is a-
Thank you, Trustee Melchiker. We need to move on. You have to push your button, press EJ. Trustee Prendergast, you're next.
Yeah, just a couple of points. On the stadium project, you were talking about foundation funding. Has there been any investigation looking into, my understanding is that kind of one of the arguments for why this is needed is because it's inadequate for J. Sarah and Mission Viejo High School games, which to me seems, well, then, J. Sarah and Mission Viejo High School would have a vested interest in this happening. Has there been any conversation with them as to putting in funding, is one question? And then the other is, I don't notice on your list of the plans, so maybe this is an adjustment, my representation as part of the aquatics community would be very interested in a 50-meter facility at IVC, so maybe just drop that little hint in there. Okay.
Alrighty. With regard to your question about the local high schools' participation, I'm going to defer to Dr. Burnett again.
The answer is yes, and we were hoping to have more conversations with them. We've had initial conversations. The college has had conversations with them for many years, but one of the things that the foundation will be doing is they're going to be leading a campaign effort, which will bring those interests as well as other interests. The reason why the foundation's taking on as a project, because it is tremendous community support for this, tremendous foundation support. In fact, they made it their top three project they're working on, up there with scholarships and the Veterans Memorial, is actually, is the stadium campaign. And one of the reasons we at the college are very supportive and thankful of the foundation is because this is the type of project, the stadium and the Wellness Center are probably two of the best projects on our entire campus, that we would have opportunities for external interest in fundraising, not the least of which, of course, is the two high schools, as well as we have other revenue generating opportunities. So the foundation's a very appropriate role to take some leadership and bringing some of those forces together and helping the college and our district to come up with some extra help.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. You know, you've hit on a number of different themes that I had made some notes on. First of all, thank you for a wonderful presentation-
Thank you.
-on this, part of which President Burnett just addressed, and that is, you know, I think for a project, for me to support a project like the stadium, which I would love to do, because I think it's a great project, I think I have to be convinced that there are those kinds of collaborative partnerships, there is that kind of fundraising effort, you know, being spearheaded by the foundation, that can raise very significant support that we ought to then be able to match, perhaps through basic aid dollars. At least that would be my concept on something like that. I do think that the Sciences Building is an important project that we ought to move forward with, regardless of the fact that we may be giving up the possibility that we could get state funding down the road. I just think that possibility at this point is so remote, and our need is so great. The story that Professor Hundley related to us tonight, I think is an embarrassment, frankly, for our district, and I just think it's of such importance that we really need to move forward on that. One of the, you addressed part of the concern, I think, that I had in your report, but not one of the other concerns, and that is that we're sitting here now with, as I read the basic aid report, approximately $130 million in unspent basic aid funds. And I think part of the point that Trustee Padberg and I both made was, and that you made earlier, is this is a wonderful time to be doing capital improvement projects. How do we accelerate the use of funds that we've already allocated to get some of these projects further along in a time that makes great sense? So I'd like you to hear you address that one. Just a couple of other points. I do think that I'm reluctant for the trustees to circumvent what I think is a very good process that we've got within our district that is a collaborative process involving the entire, you know, college communities in terms of establishing our basic aid priorities. And so- in terms of establishing our basic aid priorities. And so, you know, I'd have a lot of reluctance to, you know, again, try and circumvent that process that I think everybody's had a lot of input with, that's included as part of our master plans. So, I'll just throw that out. And then, the final point that I would make, and I'll challenge our college presidents on this, I think in the past, not enough college budget money has been devoted to deferred maintenance that have allowed some of our buildings to get in the poor condition that they're in. And I think that needs to be acknowledged and addressed. So, those are my thoughts.
Trustee Jay.
Did you want, I'm sorry, did you want to make some response to these comments? Yeah, I'm sorry.
You did ask me a question relative to the basic aid dollars. You see $130 in the bottom line on the basic aid report.
$130, man.
No, sorry. $130 million. A bit of a difference there in the basic aid report. Some of those dollars are dollars that have already been allocated to construction improvement, capital improvement projects, just haven't been spent yet. If there were a decision to spend dollars greater than the 44 million that I've identified, it would, I would suggest involve the participation of the, both of the colleges. Now, we're talking then about those scheduled maintenance dollars from basic aid, to take those from the college and put them into capital improvements. And we know the need is there for those, the IT departments. We see the most amazing, wonderful things that come out of our IT department. We're leaders in the state there. So, we would have to make a decision not to continue progressing in that way. And that would be a very, very difficult decision to make. They're hard decisions to make. I think, I don't envy you those.
My point was, is we've already allocated those dollars. We've already said, we've approved these projects. So, how do we get the money spent? How do we, and I realize that all of these projects have to be managed. And so, there may be, you know, personnel issues involved or what have you. But all we're saying is, hey, it's a great time to be doing particularly capital improvement projects. There's a number of other things in there as well. How do we accelerate the process?
We, we use more consultants, frankly. We have excellent consultants that have helped us when we've had a glut in the construction capital improvement process. So, we hire one more, you know, and we continue to do that until, that's how we can do it. It's a matter of money, though. I mean, it would cost money to do that.
Okay, we need to move on. Thank you. Trustee Jay.
Yes, I disagree with you, Dave, on, on cooperative projects between schools. They're so difficult to put together. And then, there's always, who owns the facility? Who has first choice of the scheduling and so forth? Very, very difficult. But nevertheless, if you can build a place for 50% of what you can build it for in good times, I'd suggest that we really go after our foundations. Because as the president mentioned, a foundation loves to do a project like a stadium. It's high profile, it shows, everybody sees it, they can talk about it. It's easy to raise money for, you can march people around on it, and so forth. Lastly, even the cost of demolition. Now, correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I think I heard that the demolition that we were talking about at ATEP originally was, costed out at something like $7 million. And that now, the possibility of getting it for between $2 and $3 million is there? Gary, is that right? So, I mean, that type of stuff, if there's any way we can accommodate it, it'd be wonderful. But, you know, it's a matter of setting priorities. And I don't know that the two campuses are that wild about setting priorities for demoing, demoing buildings on an old military base. So, it's very hard to convince people to spend money that way, I'm sure.
Okay. Our chancellor would like to respond to that. Push your mic, please.
Yeah. With regard to the demo projects, we're already underway.
Oh, yeah, on the way. Okay.
And what we had originally thought was going to be $7 million a number of years ago, now looks more like Brandy's three.
Three.
Well, we have a, let's see, it's 1.8 million on the current demolition that's underway. And then, there's a slab, we're just demoing the buildings to the slab. So, we have to go back and take the slabs out. We have a couple other buildings that aren't included in this process. So, it's, it's going to look between $3 and $4 million.
In other words, slabs that you hope to be able to use, you're not going to be able to use.
We're not going to be able to use them.
Yeah.
And, and the remainder of the money between what the cost is going to be and what we originally had, thought it was going to be, is part of what we're recommending get transferred to pay for the cost of the new building.
Okay.
So, when she was talking about resetting priorities, she was, part of it was to reset that money that was a savings from the bid.
It's a wonderful time to build.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
If we had the money.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you. Randy, just a little clarification for me. When we get state money for shared cost of these buildings, is there a usual formula? Is that the 80/20 formula?
It used to be. Now, it's more like 60/40. As, as they progress into their economic hard times, they were requiring that the district provide more of a match.
They'd pay 60, we'd pay 40?
Correct.
Okay.
And it used to be, they pay 80, we pay 20.
Okay. Now, let me turn to Todd for a minute. In this stadium idea of help from the foundation, it's a supposedly $6 million stadium. Has there any been any kind of discussions at all? I mean, is the foundation talking about millions of dollars of raising? Are they thinking about half, $3 million, or $4 billion, or $100,000? Can you, and I know that, I know I put you in a box to speak for them, but-
Sure. Well, first, I think you make a great point on we taking advantage of the market. So, there is a speed factor here. There's a benefit for us. That's a fundraiser. If we don't have to raise $2 million instead of four, you know, we just raised $2 million. So, just keep that in mind. The second thing is, is that the foundation is right now in early indications, not early indications, working on literally a plan right now to go out there and investigate and look at the supplemental funding that we could have to go forward. So, to say what they're looking for, millions, I'll be honest, the foundation hasn't done a large capital campaign. Even the, the capital campaign, frankly, they did for this building was minor and paled in comparison to what we're totally trying to do. So, I guess if we're looking for a timing issue, we're trying to go forward fast, to rely 100% on the foundation is a little bit unrealistic at this point. Now-
I understand it's not 100%, but for instance, like the memorial, was that hundreds of thousands, or was that-
The foundation raised about, almost over $150,000 for the Veterans Memorial.
$150,000, okay. And that was a very major, a very major project, a very major undertaking.
True, but very different, trustee Fuentes, because that really was individual donors, whereas the, the funding for this project would be large donors. We wouldn't be focusing on, you know-
Okay. I'm just trying to get a visceral feel here. Are we, are we talking about the foundation playing the role that the state might otherwise do? Because we have no state funding anticipated for the stadium. Is that right? So-
That's correct.
I mean, could we, could we even hope that the foundation might be reaching in that kind of a quantity of funding support for this?
I know the foundation board would love to, and they make it a priority, and they're going to try. For us to, to have the large expectations right now, if they're going to get there, I would say no. Certainly, within a period of time, I think, that we're all talking about. But we're not going to stop. We're going to still continue. And by the way, there's ongoing funding of the facility as well. So, it's not all a loss. But, you know, we've, the foundation made it as a priority, because it's all the need from the community and the college and our students. And they've taken it up. So, you know, once again, we can applaud them enough for taking on this on, because they realize that there are other needs at the college.
Right. Well, we're so very grateful for all that they do, and their, their help is magnificent. I'm just trying to, you know, to get some grasp that $150,000 of a very major project is a long way from millions of dollars that this project might entail. Okay. Now, go back to Randy, if I can. At this, I wish it had a page number, but it's entitled Projects Highlighted for a Three-Year Example. And ATEP is at the top. And you have the $33 million estimated cost. Is there a state designated amount in your mind, or has been presented to the state, or are we anywhere in terms of joint funding at this point in time for that Phase 3A first building at ATEP?
No.
Okay. Well, then, I guess, I guess as you come back to us with this next phase of this report, I would be interested in having perhaps one more different page, you know, of your presentation. I do not support the immediate development of ATEP. I think we're being forced into developing ATEP far faster than is appropriate. I think that the urgency of our obligation and burden as a board is to take care of IVC and Saddleback. And yet, in this presentation, we see that as a very large chunk of the big picture. And I know we're going to hear about the new markets stuff later today that I don't have much confidence in and am not particularly supportive of. So, what I would like to see is, is how does this picture look if we set ATEP aside? And, and we just concentrate on where our students and our need is. If we're not burdened with this rush to do something at ATEP, I'd like to see that on paper for our consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And if I could just move on, please. We have one more trustee wishing to speak. But I just want to say that in terms of priorities, and I think this is to the point you're making, trustee Fuentes, the priorities are developed out of a collaboration by the two college staff, faculty, and what have you. And they come to this board. And the board constantly revises those priorities. In fact, that's what this is all about right now. And that's the board's job to constantly do that. So, trustee Lang, you made that point. And you're wishing to speak now. So, you might want to try and look at it from that standpoint.
Well, I think I've already made the point on that. And that is that I still want it to be a collaborative process. Ultimately, yes, it's going to come to us, you know, for approval. But I think we need to respect those people within the college community that have identified also what they feel are the highest priority projects on both campus and for this district, and our leadership that's done that as well. But the other point that I wanted to make was, Randy, you, and, you know, perhaps you're, you're right, but the comment that you made earlier about being able to substitute a project on the for-state funding sounded to me a little bit glib, frankly. That is that we could automatically just, you know, throw in another project-
I know what you're referring to.
-rather than, you know, if we remove the science project from that, that list. And my understanding is, is that, you know, these projects obviously take years to develop. There's a submittal process to the state. I find it hard to believe, frankly, that we could just put something else, and it would automatically get the same high status that that building had for our district. So, I would appreciate-
Very good point, because it is a process, and it does take a lot of work for us to get money from the state. Sorry that I made that sound like a glib thing that we would just fall into. It's a, it's a process where we first submit a thing called an initial project proposal. The state looks at that in the first year. And then, in this, if they determine that it's qualifiable for consideration, funding consideration, if it qualifies for funding consideration, then they will move it forward to a final project proposal status. Now, that final project proposal status in the past requires about 130 to 140 points. Usually, 30 of those points, we get, 30 to 40 of those points we get because we match dollars, point for percentage. 140 points used to be competitive. I don't think it's going to be competitive in the future. Now, we've got a backlog of projects out there in the state. And school districts are in as much need, if not greater need, than we are. Our points, we are going to need to compete at a more competitive level than we have in the past. We do have projects in the pipeline right now in the IPP. We've already presented other projects besides the sciences building that are behind the sciences. It's called the Gateway Project. The mass science engineering renovation is in that pipeline. And then, another project that we call the Gateway Project, which would be classrooms and student services, that's in the pipeline. And so, we have buildings and projects that will come behind this and be considered for funding. But there's no promise that that funding would happen.
Chancellor Porter.
I'd like to respond to trustee Fuentes' question. That really was a request for another report. And I don't think it's, I think we can answer the question right now without doing another report. So, the question, as I understood it, is if we took out of the picture, building any building at ATEP, how would that help the colleges in their projects? And I think the answer is, if you were to repurpose all money now allocated to ATEP, you'd have $12,482,000 that you could apply to other projects. You would have nothing left for ATEP, and the project would be abandoned.
Yeah, not going to do that.
But I, I just wanted to answer the question is the purpose.
All right. Thank you very much, Brandy. We need to move on. And I am going to ask that we have, after we do our consent calendar, that we advance 7.7, which is new market tax credits. And that is a way to look at more money, to try and, and cope with some of the things we've just discussed. So, we'll now move to our consent calendar. Are there any items wishing to be pulled from the consent calendar?
I moved the consent calendar.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any items wishing to be pulled? All right, hearing none? Let's vote on the consent calendar.
Trustee mailed out.
All right, and it passes unanimously. That's wonderful. So, item 7.7, new market tax credits. Chancellor, will you introduce this item?
Yes, we've had discussions with the board for, I know at least a couple of years, we've talked about the topic of new market tax credits. And the board gave authorization for the administration to begin exploring an actual issue of those funding mechanisms. And that's been done. And it's looking now like it's a very, very good time to do an issue like this, in that we'd probably be able to obtain more money than we even thought that would not have to be repaid. And David Bouquet, Vice Chancellor, Human Resources and Business Services, is going to present the information that we have today. And also, Dante Gumucio, consultant from Public Economics, is here to answer any more detailed questions that the board may have.
I just see that we have a typo on our first slide. It's not moo, but it's nu.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. We need a joke.
It's a teacher in him.
Yes.
It's the teacher in him.
That is. Well, we're talking about the new, new target market tax credits. That's hard to say. I want to give you an update. In August of 2010, the Board of Trustees authorized us to proceed with the development of a new market tax credit program. Since that time, we've made quite a bit of work. The very first thing is, we initiated a feasibility study. And with that, that's not complete, that included obtaining a legal opinion from a special tax council to make certain that, that all our Ts were crossed and our Is were dotted in the process. We also then revised the scope. If you recall, initially, when we talked about the new market tax credit, we're talking about something that would benefit the district in the amount of $8 million in revenue. That would, would basically be ours to spend for improvements. That has now been revised upward. We're at $11.6 million. And that's primarily because of some of the great work that's being done by Public Economics. And so, they've also located a potential investor who's represented by a broker. Come back to the broker in just a minute and what that means. So, we also went through, we made certain that there's a new market tax credit allocation identified. And with that, for February, you'll be seeing some items coming forward. They'll be asking the Board of Trustees to look at and vote upon. The very first one is the agreement for the brokerage firm representing the investor. This will be at no cost to the district. It is part of the overall package. So, there will be a fee with that, and we'll be asking the board for approval with that. Also, we're going to ask the board for authorization for a legal entity within the existing facilities corporation that we have right now. As you know, we have a facilities corporation. We would ask for a subset or a subcorporation within that to actually manage the new market tax credits. So, that'll be coming to the board next month for, for your review and hopefully approval. And also, in the, we hope to have in your hands what's called the draft of the new market transaction term sheet. We've talked about term sheets with the city and the county. What that will do will define the conditions that we're going to find within the actual transaction. So, there'll be-
So there'll be a draft at the next board meeting, and that'll be coming at some future meetings. So that's what's happening at February. In the future past that, we're going to take that same term sheet back, once it's executed with the investor, then we'll bring it back formally to the Board of Trustees, and we'll be asking for a resolution to approve the new market transaction term sheet. So with that, let me tell you what happens at the new market tax credit, at the thing called the closing. When you close a loan or a house mortgage, you have a closing. So the same thing with the new market tax credit, we would have a closing. What happens is that the district loans $23.2 million to an investment fund. At the same time, on the same day, the investor invests $14.8 million into the investment fund. That means there's a, and then with that, that whole fund, $38 million, is in loan to the district facilities corporation. We would be loaning the money to ourselves, and it's our money underneath our control. From that point forward, then the district facilities corporation pays $23.2 million back to the district, and we actually sell the land. The ATEP land would then be held by the facilities corporation, which we own. So we would actually be loaning ourselves money to purchase the land for ourselves in the process. Okay? It's a complex transaction, except for the fact that if you keep in mind that we are SOC CD, we actually own a corporation of ourselves, a facilities corporation. We will actually be loaning money to the facilities corporation, and then we turn it around as a college, we sell the land at ATEP to the facilities corporation, which is ours also. Okay? So with that, the district facilities corporation will then be able to have $11.6 million to spend for ATEP improvements that we don't have to pay back. And so, as this transpires, then essence, as ATEP has developed, the, it would be underneath the facilities corporation, and the billions would go up, and we would have our partners through that process. I see a couple puzzled looks.
No, yeah, we don't own the land. We won't own it for 20 years, so you can't do it.
Okay. Dante, do you want to come up?
President Pat Berg, members of the board, nice to see you all again. Chancellor Porter, nice to see you in that chair, as opposed to down there.
Could you introduce yourself for the audience?
My name is Dante Gumucio. I'm the CEO of Public Economics, Inc. We are redevelopment and special financial consultants to the district. The current ownership of 68-plus acres at ATEP is currently divided between a portion that's owned in fee by the district and a portion that is subleased pursuant to a lease and furtherance of conveyance from the Navy to the city to the district. So a little over half the land is fee land, a little over, a little less than half is lease land. The transfer of control of the property that is contemplated by the $23.2 million loan through the investment fund to the district facilities corp to acquire the control over that land is not a purchase in fee of the land, but is a transfer of control from the district to the facilities corp, which is, of course, the district, wearing a different hat. The legality of that transfer, especially under the specific terms of the conveyance agreement pursuant to which the district got the land in the first place, both the fee part and the lease part, has been reviewed by multiple attorneys. They are all in agreement that we can transfer control of the property in this fashion, that it is legal in general, and that it is also in compliance with the conveyance agreement. So we've addressed that and looked at it very carefully, and there won't be a problem doing that unless the city doesn't want to be cooperative, which, of course, is always a consideration.
All right. Chancellor Porter.
Maybe a little clarification, because there's money moving around here. First of all, with regard to the first line, which is a $23 million, it's explained as a loan. That goes out, let's give an example, at 8:00 in the morning, and by the end of that day, it's back. So the loan is, you know, maybe an eight- or nine-hour loan. At the end of the day, we have it back, and we can use that money. Okay? The facility corporation that we're talking about is the South Orange County Community College Facilities Corporation that we've had here for many, many years. It issued some COPs. Every year, you have a meeting, you adjourn, in your organization meeting, you go into it, you appoint officers of that corporation. Those officers are you. So when you're talking about transferring the title of the land, you're talking about transferring it from you to you.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Does that help at all?
Yeah. Okay. Anything else in your presentation?
No, that's it.
Okay. So how soon, if we decided to do this, would we get the 11 million?
Dante, it'll actually happen the day of the closing. So let Dante explain some more.
So let's say that we-
Raise the mic, Dante, so we can hear you better.
Yes. Excuse me. Because there are a lot of moving parts in a transaction of this nature, and because we're moving as quickly as we can, with good fortune, we may be able to bring a transaction that is ready for your approval in February or possibly March. Alternatively, it may be April. Once we do that, however, and you approve the transaction by resolution, then we will wait approximately 60 days to close the transaction. So let's just say that it's approved at your board meeting at the end of April. Then, at your, by your board meeting at the end of June, we should be about ready to close on or about July 1st. That's when the $11.8 million of unencumbered funds that would not have to be repaid would be available. Now, we've been contemplating ways that we can increase, we've already increased what was an $8 million target to, you know, by a substantial percentage. We're contemplating ways in which we may be able to even double that amount of money. And clearly, the larger that net subsidy becomes, then the smaller any supplemental requirement for basic aid funds to complete that first building. So we may, you know, we'll, we may be back next month to talk about a possible way of expanding the scope of the transaction so that we can almost pay for all of it without any further basic aid funds that have already been encumbered.
Thank you. We have other trustees wishing to speak. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just, little wary here as someone who feels he single-handedly caused the housing crash when my house closed, and three days later it happened. What, is there a negative? Is there a possibility we don't get the $11 million? Something unforeseen goes wrong in the negative? It's great that you see that there's a potential for doubling it, but is there a potential for having it?
The amount of the net subsidy, now estimated $11.8 or whatever, is locked in in the term sheet. The investor that Dr. Bougue referred to, that appears to be ready to do this transaction, and would appear to be ready to do a much larger one as well, has indicated that he may be signing, or they may be signing, the draft term sheet next week. The allocatee, the community development entity, which receives the allocation of authority from the Federal Department of the Treasury to do these, you know, to make that authority available to projects like this, that we're talking to, we've actually talking with two of them, have indicated that they may be prepared to sign that same term sheet in as little as 30 days. Once both of them sign the term sheet, then those terms are locked in, of course, assuming that the board approves the term sheet. And it's always possible, I suppose, that there's a slip between the cup and the lip, between now and the final signature date by those two parties. But once those two parties have signed, then it's locked in. And so, the only way you wouldn't get that money is if you decided not to do the transaction.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, Dante, refresh my memory. Are there, is there conditions associated with this transaction relative to needing to spend the money for the actual capital improvements? I know there are restrictions on the use of the property once it's constructed. I don't see that as being an issue, but I'm wondering about the upfront cost. And again, it would mean, it seems to me, that, I forget, is this, how this affects our basic aid, our present basic aid allocation list? So maybe the chancellor can address that, and you can address the first part of that.
Well, with the pilot financing, as we characterized it, which was a way to sort of get our feet wet in this, with this kind of financing mechanism, the, oh my gosh, I suddenly drew a blank. Trustee Lang, what was your first question?
Initial expenditure of funds.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. The special legal counsel the district has retained, the law firm of Bergman and Alderdyce, is comfortable with the district spending the proceeds of the transaction within two years, three years, whatever, as long as, at closing, there is a reasonable expectation that vertical construction will begin, quote, "soon," unquote. The word "soon" is not defined in statute. In fact, I don't think it exists in statute, and it's certainly not defined in their legal memo. But they are comfortable with "soon." Now, investors in new markets tax credits and allocaties like to see things happening as opposed to sitting in escrow. They would prefer to see money being spent within 12 months, not necessarily all of it, but some of it at least, or at very least 24 months. But those would be negotiating points with the investor and the allocatee that might affect their willingness to sign the term sheet, which both of them are very seriously considering doing right now.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
There was a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My understanding of your question is-
Push your mic, please.
How does this transaction help the need for basic aid funds? Is that correct?
More dovetail with existing basic aid.
Mic, please.
More dovetailing with existing basic aid plans and allocations that have been made.
Okay. Well, it goes back to the presentation that Brandy made earlier, where she showed that the first building that we're talking about here, 50,000-square-foot building, would cost $33 million. We said, well, we could repurpose money that we had already allocated to ATEP, such as some of that demo money. And with this new market tax credits, then probably with an additional allocation from the board of $10, $11 million, we could build the building.
That's really my point, is that you would need, in connection with this item, you would need to come back to this board-
Yes.
-with an action item relative to allocation of basic aid funds.
That's right. And going along with that, if the board wouldn't want to do that, then that goes back to the point that Dante was making. There must be an ex, there's an expectation that we'll be moving forward with the project. Without that $10 million, we wouldn't be doing that.
Right.
Trustee Fuentes.
Dante, since we've been talking about ATEP over these many years, and the discussion has been offered by countless members of this board, why don't we just sell the damn thing? And we have always been told, well, we can't sell it because the Navy won't let us sell it, and Tustin won't let us sell it. Are you prepared to present to this board letters from the Navy and from the city of Tustin that they give us their approval to do this? Well, I'm just an economist. I'm not an attorney. That's- But you've brought this thing to us through these years, through these months. Let me say, first of all, that, as I've explained, there are, under the existing conveyance agreement between the city and the district, there is a prohibition on certain kinds of property transfers. If we were talking about transferring the property to a third party, that would be prohibited for a number of years under the conveyance agreement. What we're talking about for this transaction, we've been advised, is a permitted transfer from the district to itself. And as I understand the conveyance agreement and have heard the attorney speak to the matter, in order to sell the property, if you will, to a third party, the conveyance agreement would have to be amended, which would require the approval of the city, and I'm informed that it would require the approval of the Navy, although I'm not specifically qualified to speak to that, to that point. Well, I would think, speaking to my colleagues, that to exercise our fiduciary responsibilities, we would need to know that. We would need to know whether this is legal in the eyes of the Navy and of the city of Tustin. My next point is, this district takes great pride in its reputation of having no debt. This is something that members who sit here campaign on for reelection, and we take great pride in from this podium. Can we now say, if this new markets project should move forward, that this district has no new debt? If we focus on the pilot financing at its present scope, which was hoping to get $8 million of subsidy and now looking at $11.8, the loan, quote-unquote, the one-day loan that the district would make to itself, would continue to appear on the district's books as a loan for as long as the new markets tax credits transaction is outstanding, which would be anywhere from seven to 15 years, depending on the investor. But the loan, in effect, would have been prepaid to the district by 5:00 in the afternoon or 10:00 the next morning. So in terms of the district's books, the loan will continue legally to itself, but in terms of the district's cash, the loan, in effect, would have already been repaid. So that is a technical situation that may give you different answers, depending on how you want to deal with the technicalities. Well, I don't think in truth we could then say this district has no more debt, has no new debt, or has no debt. Well, it would have debt to itself.
Yeah.
It would have debt to an agency that has spent the money. By giving it back to the district, yes.
All right. I need to have a motion to continue the meeting for 30 minutes because we are at the point-
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And would everyone please vote on the motion?
I'll second that.
Well, it's been seconded.
Sorry, it's been seconded.
Yes. All right. It passes unanimously. And we have only one trustee left to speak on this item, and then we need to move on.
All right. I have one more question.
We're going, I'm sorry, just a moment, please, Trustee Fuentes. After Trustee Fuentes finishes and Trustee Jay speaks to this item, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and try and get through our general action items. Trustee Fuentes, one more point, please.
My question is, who are these people that we're getting in bed with? I don't want to come here a month from now, not having had the opportunity to investigate through my own efforts, who these people are that we're doing $23 million worth of business with. Who are they? Tell us their name, who they are. The, that's a two-part question. There is one investor, possibly more, but right now, one investor, who has expressed a willingness to do the transaction. The investor is represented by a broker, and at this time, the broker has requested that the name of the investor, which I don't even know, one of my partners does, not be divulged because of the broker's concern about circumvention. Once the brokerage agreement is approved by the board, then the investor's name can be divulged- be divulged, but I will say this, it is a commercial bank. It is a commercial bank that acquired another commercial bank, or maybe more than one, on very sweet terms. That was banks that were failing, and the assets of those banks have created a very difficult excessive profit picture for the new bank, for the acquiring bank. I believe it's a California bank, and it is looking for tax benefits, and that's why it is interested in particular in doing this transaction. As far as the other party, that's the allocatee, the community development entity. We're talking with two of them right now. I think it would be premature to divulge their names because they haven't taken any formal action on this, but they are extremely reputable entities, and I'm sure we can make their names available to you as needed individually, so that you can do your individual due diligence if you'd like to start that now. However, again, neither has committed to the project yet, so again, it may be premature. And once they have committed, you will have ample time to investigate them and evaluate their bona fides.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
Yes, I understand it now, I think. Now, here's what I'd like to see from you, Dante, would be a flow chart, because it's listed in paragraphs and certain amounts, and who owns this, and who owns this, and Economics Incorporated, which is you, is involved, and so forth. I'd like to see a flow chart of all of that stuff and be able to pass it out here to this entire board and the assembled...
We have one.
Okay.
But not with us today.
Okay, and we need to see that.
Yes, sir.
And I voted for it back in August, and again, but I think that it would really help if we had something more than just four or five paragraphs telling us what's going on.
This was just a brief status report. You'll be given probably more information than you care to see.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dante and vice chancellor. We'll take a five-minute break.
How far a drive do you have?
I gotta give you something to sign, so when you get up there, got a working chair.
The district.
This story is being more interesting.
Actually. A lot less than a full day. But as you know, trying to have them sell all together. So just, just before we back on the trip. I have no idea how much that was.
Fucking good.
Thank you. You answered that question.
See, anyway.
Big one.
I think we've got it.
That's the news for them. They have.
You would never know. But I only feel like a conference. It sounds like that lady can't decide what she wants to do.
Nancy, Nancy, just, if you see.
Really? Looking at that. I mean, you know, you and Gary gotta bring up.
It's got Morrison now. It's, I guess, water and light and everything. All we can take is care of something else. We don't have to. And everybody go to classes.
At least you get a look down. And then I'm gonna. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm giving it a rehash. And then let me give you that envelope.
That's what I thought.
All right, we need to get started. We're a little bit beyond our five-minute break time. Sophie, come to order, please. Got to get ready for the tape. I forget my buttons here. Ah, we're ready. All right, we're back in session, and we'll move to our general action item 6.1. And I'll have the President of IVC present this. President Rockmore.
Yes, 6.1 is actually, is just an agreement that we have with the County of Orange that will allow us to receive, to allow us to receive funds from the Workforce Investment Board. And so we haven't applied for those yet, but this agreement is a precursor to be able to make those applications. And it is with the County of Orange.
And this is, all right, thank you. All right, no comments. Let's vote, please. All right, prove unanimously. 6.2, another IVC item. President Rockmore.
Let's be happy to.
Wait, can we just have the item announced as to what we're voting on, please? This is the Irvine Valley College. Would you announce the item, please, President Rockmore?
Yes. What this item is, is there was a Senate bill passed, 857, that you see here. And what happens is that an organization, for which I can't remember right now, it has to, it's the legal system, charges us back for any tickets that we give. And so this Senate bill had allowed an additional $3 charge back to us for each process. I have Will, Chief Will Glenn here.
Maybe he could come forward briefly and explain it to us, please. Come to the podium, please, Chief. So essentially, we're getting money, but we're charging the people who get tickets more?
They're charging us.
Oh, they're charging us? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Well, in October of 2010, the state legislature passed a bill that was signed by the governor, which imposes a $3 fine on parking violators. The monies are to go to a state trial court fund. The fund is really for operating expenses for the courts. And when that bill was signed by the governor, it automatically became effective 60 days later, which was December 7th. At that point, now all violators in the state, parking violators, are assessed a $3 fee. Unless we adjust our fee that we charge for violations, we, in essence, are paying that $3 fee. So the purpose is to adjust that. It's not a general increase across the board. It's only for those that violate or policy in park regulations.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like a great idea. Do you have a motion, please? Oh, it has been moved and seconded. Thank you, Trustee Lang. Let's vote. I see no one wishing to speak. Trustee Prendergast, push your button again. Thank you. Carries unanimously. 6.3, CCT Board of Director nominations. Chancellor, would you like to present this?
This is an item for the Board of Trustees to determine if they wish to make any nominations for the membership to Triple C T Board of Directors. And if so, we'll transmit those.
Okay. Do I have any trustees wishing to nominate anyone?
Move, receiving file.
All right, thank you. I see no one wishing to nominate, and there's a motion to receive it and file it and not take action on it. So second, all in favor of just receiving it and filing it? Vote, please. Carries unanimously. We're moving right along. 6.4, renewal agreement of file well services and support, presented by the Chancellor.
Vice Chancellor Brumucci will explain this.
There's a new federal law requiring colleges and universities to employ technological measures in an attempt to prevent the illegal download of music and movies. This is engaging the service to comply with that law.
Okay, any trustees wishing to speak? Okay, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. 6.5. This is to be presented by the Chancellor and its board policy revisions, and is for discussion and approval. Want to present these?
Vice Chancellor Bougain, who works with the Board Policy Committee, can discuss these.
They're self-explanatory unless you have any questions on them.
Second, all right. All of those in favor, vote on the item? All right, carries unanimously. 6.6. This is board policy revisions. These are for review and study. And would you like to present this again, Vice Chancellor Bougain?
These policies, there's 10 of them, they're.
We can't hear you. Can you put your mouth at the mic?
These are policies coming to the board for review and study. You'll also see a couple of things pertaining to electronic security, some new areas, as well as like the card industry data security standards. So we're, we're trying to be on top of the changes in the market and comply with that as well.
All right, and no one wishing to speak. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. 6.7. This is non-resident tuition fees for foreign and out-of-state students. Trust, Vice Chancellor Portner, would you present this item?
Vice Chancellor Bougain can jump in anytime he wants.
Okay.
Each year, we adopt new non-resident tuition fees. As, as we talked about it before, there are statewide calculations. And, and then we check with surrounding districts to make sure that the fees that we're going to be charging are competitive with the surrounding districts, and we do that. And then it has to be, these fees have to be approved by the board at this meeting, no later than this meeting.
Okay, moved and seconded. Trustee Prendergast wishes to speak.
Yeah, just real quick, does this take into account, or was this determined before the governor's announcement of raising regular tuition to $36? Is that already accounted for in this assessment, or does it need to be reevaluated again?
Okay, well, first of all, this doesn't have to do with tuition fees. These are non-residents. So this is what we charge to students that are not residents of California.
His fee was for residents, so. So I think the answer is no. Is that right?
Right, the two of them are not linked together.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. 6.8. This is sabbatical recommendations for 2011 through 2012. And Chancellor, you present the item, please?
Yes, there's.
There's a process that the district follows according to the academic contract. And Vice Chancellor Bougain now is, works with that process. The faculty put in for sabbaticals with a project that they're proposing. And that goes, is supposed to be reviewed and recommended by the colleges. And then after that happens, it goes to a sabbatical review committee at the district that Vice Chancellor works with, and they then make recommendations, and is then forwarded to you. And what you have here is the result of all that work.
All right, moved and seconded. No one wishing to speak. Let's vote on the item. All right, carries unanimously. Moving on to 6.9, academic personnel actions. Vice Chancellor Bougain.
What changes?
No changes. So I have a motion and a second. All right, no one wishing to speak. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. 6.10, classified personnel actions.
There's two changes. We wish to remove items B4 and D6.
I'm sorry, excuse you, speak a little more into the mic.
We would like to delete items B4.
B4.
And D6.
And B6. Okay, so deleting and making those changes. B4 and B6 are being deleted. Motion is with the changes. Motion, I hear a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion made and seconded. No one wishing to speak. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. We are now at our reports section. And I'll ask the Chancellor to present 7.1, and this is an information item. Anything, any comments about 7.1? Since Irvine Valley speakers for Saddleback and Irvine Valley. Next is the basic aid report, 7.2. No comments or questions. 7.3 is the facilities plan status report. No comments or changes. 7.4 is the list of board requested reports. No comments or changes. Seven, all right, Trustee Fuentes.
I wonder if we could just take a moment. This is the first time that we would have addressed this for our two new trustees to explain to them.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
How this works. Well, maybe better the Chancellor could do it. I just think that they should know that they have this opportunity.
Sure.
There's a opportunity at each board meeting for trustees to request information. In the past, there was some confusion about how that occurs. So we agreed on a process that if you would like a report, that would be, a report that would be brought to the meeting. You request it here, and then your fellow trustees vote on whether or not they agree that that's a report that would be appropriate. If it is, then the administration proceeds to develop the information and put together a report for you.
And this item is just tracking those requests as to when they were made and the process? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move to 7.5, which is the monthly financial status report. Questions or comments? 7.6 is the report on employees' earnings over $100,000. Trustee Fuentes.
First of all, I want to thank Chancellor for bringing this report to us. I have requested this some months ago, and I'm very happy that it is now here and for public record. And I trust this is on our website for those who want, in the public community, who want to access it and to see, as well as for our colleges and district communities to be under, to be able to see and appreciate the generosity of the district taxpayers. Some time ago, when I first brought this up, it was postponed. It actually came to us and then was taken off, and the matter was postponed. And our acting chancellor took it back with the idea of establishing a policy that this might come to us on a regular basis. And I'd like to know what is the status of that policy?
Vice Chancellor Bougain, can you tell us where that is in your process?
The, the policy, we've discussed it for several months at the Board Policy Administrative Regulation Committee. We actually approved a policy draft to come to the Board of Trustees at the next meeting, as of last Friday. So it's ready to come forward. I actually have copies of it with me, you know, if the board desired to look at even tonight. But we have, but the board, we do have a policy coming forward on it.
I imagine that policy says we're going to have the report.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, we'll move 7.7. We have done, and we are at item eight, which are the reports. And we'll start with the Academic Senate from Saddleback.
Okay. I'm not Carmen.
Uh huh.
I'm Joanne Alford, and I am the Secretary of the Academic Senate, a member of the counseling faculty at Saddleback College. And I'd like to start off by thanking the board, the Chancellor Portner, and President Burnett for allowing the hiring of new and replacement faculty. Also, I'd like to thank the Vice President on behalf of the Academic Senate, the Vice Chancellor, I'm sorry, Bougain and his, his staff in Human Resources. During the flex week, they came out and presented a workshop for all the Academic Senate representatives and the faculty that will be serving on search teams. And it was a wonderful presentation, very much appreciated. Even faculty members like myself, who are very senior and have been on many of these committees, learned a lot during that session, and we do appreciate that. In yesterday's Senate meeting, we were approving faculty members to set on that, on those committees. And we will also continue to do this until all of our search committees are filled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And IVC's Academic Senate.
Good evening. I'll be brief. First, I'd just like to, on behalf of the Academic Senate at IVC, echo the congratulations to our colleague Ben Burnett on his state championship. Secondly, we would like to welcome our new trustee, Dr. Meldow. If I pronounce it correctly, I'll have, I'm sure I have two years to practice that. But I'd also like to extend an invitation at your convenience to attend one of our Rep Council meetings during the spring. I'd be happy to help you arrange that, so that you have the opportunity to introduce yourself and meet the faculty at IVC. Finally, only two brief announcements. January 24th, next Monday, we will be having one of our IVC-to-IVC Monday night lectures, and it is entitled iPhone, iPod Touch, iPad, BlackBerry, Android, Favorite Apps for Educators, Administrators, Classified Staff and Students. It will be presented by Professor Rupa Mather of the Department of Business. In addition to that, on the next Monday, which is January 31st at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center on the campus at IVC, we'll be having one of our Senate-sponsored distinguished academic lecture series. It will be, we will be introducing Gregorio Luke, who will speak on Mexico art and history. He is the former director of the Museum of Latin American Art in Long Beach, California, former consul for the Cultural Affairs of Mexico in LA, and First Secretary at the Embassy of Mexico in Washington, DC. So tickets are free, available at the pack, but we do expect a full house. So make arrangements to come. It will be wonderful. And of course, as an art historian, I'm a bit biased, but it will be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Provost Peoples from ATAP, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome, Dr. Meldow. I'm going to defer to my written report to save time tonight, but just indicate that the ATAP progress for development is moving forward on many fronts simultaneously, and we appreciate that support. Thank you.
Thank you. President Rockmore, IVC.
Thank you very much, and I would like to welcome Trustee Meldow also, and mention that baskets are probably forthcoming. You're welcome. But welcome, and I look forward to working with you. I would like to mention, I would like to introduce, actually, our new Dean of Academic Programs. Dr. Worley has 28 years of experience in the community colleges. Seven of those years has been as an administrator. And her last job was actually a Vice President for Instruction at San Diego Miramar College. And she's in the audience here. If you would stand.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome.
A second introduction for someone who couldn't make it tonight. He's actually nursing a broken ankle. But we have replaced our Director of Technology, and his name is Bruce Hagan. And he has over 20 years of experience in technology. He was last working at Fremont College in Saritas. And prior to getting into his prior work, he actually proudly served the, in the Air Force as sergeant in the First Gulf War as a, as a base communications computer operator. So that's, of course, where he started. And then finally, I would just like to remind everybody that there is the 24th Annual Astounding Inventions that is set to take place on January 29th. And please let me know if you're, you're coming, and I'll make sure you get introduced during the award ceremony, which is at 1:00 PM. But if you would like to come before that, it starts at 10:00. There's a lot of events that go out. I'm proud to say that this program has now grown to over 400 students this year. So it should be a very active campus that day.
Yes, and I highly recommend this to our two new trustees. This is just a tremendous program. And the winner usually ends up on Jay Leno, right?
Well, the Jay Leno chooses from different categories, usually personality. And so there will be winners in that category that may go on Jay Leno. There's not a guarantee. But also, the, the law firm of Greenberg Traugig provides a $10,000 pro bono patent search. And of course, they do their own selection process as well.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, President Burnett from Saddleback.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations and welcome, Dr. Meldow. Couple things. First, as you know, classes just started. Started last week, two weeks ago. So I just want to say it's going really well. We're up Saddleback about 5% from the last semester. So things are going great. Second, two announcements, and you've already seen them on your desk. We talked a little bit about it. Tomorrow is the President's Cup. Hooray! It's really fun. It's the third annual. I'm sorry you're going to miss it, Trustee Prendergast. But it's really a great time. We look forward to it. And I'm sorry you won't be there either, President Rockmore. You guys are doing great things, but we'll see you at IVC on February 4th, I believe it is, for the second half. We hopefully will see the rest of the trustees. We'd love to have you and your families. What's really significant this year is, if you recall, we're starting to do fundraisers. We are doing Coaches for Cancer. We put it on your chairs, gave you a copy of the shirt. We're actually selling these for $10. The students and the athletic department is for Coaches for Cancer. And also get a little pink thing to put on. It says Coaches for Cancer. Anyway, so it'd be really great to have. And so it's free to get in, but we are asking people for donations for Coaches for Cancer, and you can get a T-shirt for $10. Finally, we talked a lot today about our stadium. We talked a lot about our Saddleback College Foundation. Well, they're having their big event of the year. It's the annual event. It's on February 5th, Saturday. I hope you and your friends and everybody else you know can come. As you see, our foundation is very important to the success of our college, to some very important projects to this board and our community. This foundation is really doing great, phenomenal progress. So I really invite everyone to please come in the community and in our college community, too, to go out and support our, our students and our foundation. Once again, February 5th.
Thank you. And Trustee Prendergast just whispered in my ear that his daughter has an invention in the Astounding Inventions program. Little pressure, a little pressure. No pressure. Yes. All right, thank you. And I'll have a second for that. Second, all in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. We will move on, and let's see, we are at, I think I skipped you two. You get one, you go right ahead.
I want to thank Academic Senate for allowing us to come and present some of the new things we're doing in Human Resources. One of them was we're trying to go paperless. And you have to understand that human resource people have a hard time giving up paper. So this is a withdrawal problem. But we're actually going through each faculty recruitment. We'll have its own individual website, with access only to the people on the committee, the dean and the president. They see the status of what's happening, so we'll actually be tracking it, and they can see instantly what's going on with that. Now, now, that being said, also, I just want to point out to the board, presidents give baskets, vice chancellors give chocolate.
Vice Chancellor Brumucci, did you want to make a report?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move over to the President of the IVC Classified Senate, Angela Mahaney.
Well, thank you. Due to time constraint, I just would like to introduce our new CCA president, May. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. And will you have a report for us?
Just briefly, I wanted to say, welcome to Dr. Meldow, to the board. Also, that in December, we elected our new slate of officers who took over January 1st. And we're doing all of our housekeeping issues this month, also working on a reopeners for our collective bargaining agreement. And we'll have more to report next month, because we're currently working on our survey and so forth. Thank you.
Okay. And President of our Classified Senate?
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Meldow. Classified Senate. For CS, State Classified Senate. As President, we now have our flyers out. We will be moving out of the Lake Tahoe retreat that we've been doing the last 13 years. We will be down at the Ventura Beach Round Plaza this year, on the beach. So we're looking forward to a lot of students attending and classified this time around, because it's going to be closer to home, and the price is considerably less than going to Tahoe. Coming up this weekend also, along with the trustees that are going to Sacramento, I will be up there also as the second Vice Chair of CCLC to the Board of Directors. We'll be having our meeting. And then we'll be doing our legislative work and going to the Capitol on Monday. With that, we'll close it.
All right, and at this point, our meeting is officially over. But I'd like to hear a motion that we adjourn in memory of Dylan Carson, a Saddleback College student who recently passed away, and Robert Sickles, a Saddleback College student who recently passed away. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Good night, everyone.